Well, hello friends and welcome to the August 16th edition of Weekly Witness, Texas Impacts Weekly opportunity for mainstream Texans of faith to learn about public policy issues here in the great state of Texas and have a conversation about how you can engage in the process. My name is Scott Adnip, your host and Texas Impacts Engagement Director. And today's episode is brought to you by Methodist Healthcare Ministries of South Texas and Friendship West Baptist Church in Dallas. And today we are excited to feature a conversation with your lobbyist, Texas Impacts Advocacy Director Josh Houston. And if you're with us live, I'd encourage you to feel free to post questions in the Q and A and we'll see if we can get to some of those at the end as I watch Josh's face sink. But to set the stage before we jump in, I just want to let you know, we are recording at noon on Monday, August 16th. So by the time you hear this, there might be updates. So just know that is when and where we are recording. So as of now, excuse me, the governor has called a second special session after Democrats opposing the voter suppression bills fled for Washington DC to break quorum in the first called session. And we're now nine days into this second 30 day called session. The Senate has been very, very busy in the last week. We'll talk about some of the things they have done and some of the things they have yet to do. But as of today, there's been no action on the House side as they have yet to meet their quorum requirement. And we'll talk more about that during this episode. So we're going to talk about those quorum requirements. We're going to talk about what they mean and what the Senate's up to with Josh today. But before we get there, we just wanted to let you know, yes, we have seen the videos of the Capitol flooding. Many of you over the course of the years have visited the Capitol, which we often refer to as the people's house. And that house did have massive leaks coming through the skylights yesterday flooding possibly hundreds of offices and rooms. And I promise we won't make jokes about plagues. You can go on Twitter and see those. But y'all, we've all talked to staff members. You've made telephone calls to them. And so we want to say that we do feel for them today. And we're grateful to the countless state employees who started that cleanup work yesterday and will continue that work today and probably in the days to come. So thoughts with them today. So with that, Josh, welcome to the conversation.
Thanks for having me again. Good to be back.
Well, I should say that B wanted us to give a special shout out to the State Preservation Board. We work with those folks at events and then really send them our well wishes today. Anything you want to add on Capitol flooding today?
Oh, no, they're top notch folks. Despite a little tip I got into about hanging a television on the wall 12 years ago, when I worked on the House staff. No, they are actually great. We have done, oh God, I don't even know how many events over the years, Scott. I mean, dozens and dozens. They're always professional, top notch folks to work with and have really been there. They're just public servants that just do their jobs and they have their hands full right now. What I've heard is that it's a clogged pipe. I do not know what pipe. It must have been one heck of a pipe. If you've seen it, it was several inches of water. I know Riot where that video was taken by a friend of mine, actually, that works on staff. And I don't know what he was doing up there on a Sunday. He should have been taking the day off. But he, I know Riot where he was, that was the, the, but he was anyway, I won't get into too many personal deals. But yeah, I mean, it was, it hits, it's, I don't know if the public gets it or not, but it hits home for a lot of the lobby who spent a lot of time in that building.
Yeah, well, I'm sure you would much rather be on this podcast with us today than cleaning up the mess that is those Capitol offices, I'm sure. But
Wow. Yeah, I think about the stuff on my floor in my office, not expecting a flood. And every office is, it's an office the same way. And people, who knows what damage has been done with, I don't know exactly how many inches, but even this much water would be disastrous.
Let's go ahead and jump in because I'm sure most of our listeners would much rather hear us talk about the public policy that's happening in the Capitol and not the water on the floor. So Josh, just to bring people up to speed in terms of what we've been doing as a staff over the course of the last, I don't know, month now, it seems like every day the House will set a time to come in and every day we're like everybody else who all gather to watch the video to see if there's a quorum or not, and spend about 15 or 20 minutes and watch one of the members of the House who's there pray, and then have the Speaker ask for people to check in if they've yet to do so. And then the video goes off and we get back to the rest of our day. Is that, is that am I right? Can you explain kind of that process and what's going on on the House side right now?
Yeah, I mean, kind of before we get to the House, it's always shocking to me how like, I can't, my wife will try to ask me, what's your day like tomorrow? And that's often an unpredictable question when they're in session, but it's even more unpredictable now. Like I could see you in 15 minutes. I could see you in 24 hours. I'm not really sure what's about to happen. And no one else is either, but it's all consuming for us. I have to remind myself, it's always a good reminder that most people in Texas probably don't even know that they're in special session.
Yeah.
Walking the dog, chatting with a neighbor last night, and it was like, you know, you kind of sort of know somebody because you're a neighbor, but hey, what do you do for a living? I'm a lobbyist. And oh, what's that like? Like, well, they're in special session. Oh, really? I didn't know that. Much less that they can't make quorum is way off people's radars. And it's always jarring to me.
We'll say I read your text to my wife yesterday because we were, we were talking on the phone when you texted and said, well, I guess we have the, or I guess it was Saturday. I guess we have the rest of our Saturday off at, you know, 10:15 when we found out there wasn't a quorum and we weren't going to have to watch it all day. So yes, it is, it is day by day at this point.
Well, I think it was more fun. I mean, but it brings me to a telltale anecdote about how not tuned in my neighbor was. And then also I have contradictory anecdotes where I was at a birthday party for my child and was chatting with one of the dads and he grew up here like I did, you know? And if you think about our age, you know, two thirds of Texans have moved here or been born since I was born. And it was 12 million people in the state when I was born. And now there are 30 with that census data that was just released. And so I think that there's, anyway, we were talking about how his friends who are, some of them are expats in the sense that they live in a different state, right? Colorado, Arizona, whatever, are calling him, what is going on in your state? And you know, he, you know, so I think that there's kind of contradictory data right there. And I bring it up to say, historically, and by historically, I mean from like 1876 through the 20th century, right? Texans have not wanted to pay much attention to their state government. And because they didn't want to pay much attention to it, they made it weak and limited so that they didn't have to worry about it. And I think it's, I bring it up as analysis to say is, I think there's an open question going on right now. I have seen a number of commentators that watch this like we do, say, you know, this is probably the most raucous and volatile times since Paul Ferguson. I've seen it go even further back to say since Reconstruction and comparisons to EJ Davis and the Reconstruction radical Republican governors of the era. I think there's a question about whether or not this paradigm is still true of having limited governments that we don't have to pay attention. And what do the two thirds of Texans that have moved here just in the last 40 years, what did they expect? We're seeing a massive expansion of power at the state level, which we're going to talk about in detail with when we get to some of the, what they've been up to. And then the question is, how long does it take for Texans to notice? Because like I've said, Texans don't want to pay their state government much attention. So do Texans notice this expansion of power? And if they notice, do they care? And if they care, what is it the Texans expect of their state government in the 21st century? I think, and these are all, so to recap, just our last eight months, we've been through massive blackouts that killed people. We've been through a pandemic for 18 months now that is still ongoing. I think the flooding of the Capitol was for, I don't know how much people outside the Capitol community pay that attention, but it was just kind of like the icing on the cake of this period that we've been through. And I think the question that we don't know the answer to is, does this change the historic disposition of Texans? And the only way to really know that is going to be in 2022, when we go to the polls again, both in March and the primary, whenever that will be, that's an open question. And then again, in November, the general election.
Yeah, it is. It is a time like no other in Texas government. We haven't done this as long as many other people. But yeah, I don't know anybody who's ever personally witnessed what we're currently seeing.
It's really kind of a new paradigm where the old paradigm was limited government, no authority to do nothing, to do as little as possible. I shouldn't say nothing. But this new paradigm is using very expansive state authority to prevent local governments from doing anything. That's very different. It's like the expansive authorities of EJ Davis and the Reconstruction governors, but being used to impose a lack of authority on local governments that were obviously locally elected. And that's, that's a very different paradigm. I mean, we, we, in the 19th century said, we don't want to have an expansive governor or an expansive state government because we want power in the counties. And if you drive through Texas, that's why you see such beautiful historic county buildings. That was because power was vested at a very local level. And that has been true for 150 years. And I think we're now seeing a complete, I saw one, it's not my words, it was, I saw one headline that said, called it a civil war between local governments and state government. And, and this is playing out in a way that voters will have to pay attention to or will not pay attention to, but voters will have to make a decision one way or another about in 2022.
So before we get to 2022, we've got to finish second special session and whatever comes next. There's certainly been a lot in the news and we've had a lot of conversations about quorum in Texas. Can you kind of explain what that is and kind of what they're doing every day when they check in on the House?
Yeah. Yeah. So I wanted to frame it because this is, this is what we're seeing play out. I mean, so let's get, let's get down into it a little bit now. With quorum in the House, a majority of, the Texas constitution requires that two thirds of the members of the entire House be present in order to conduct any business whatsoever. And so right now they do not have 100 members to conduct business. 51, or in this case, 54, I believe, as of the last check in, are not, not present on the House floor. Where exactly they are is an open question. The routine has been to come in, they do an invocation, a prayer, and then there's an announcement from the Speaker to check in with the Journal Clerk, to register your attendance with the Journal Clerk, and then they stand at ease. I want to spend a couple of minutes on this because there isn't, it's arcane, but super important to the rules. And it's not just the rules, right? It's the constitutional requirement for a two thirds majority. They're not doing a roll call on a daily basis. They're saying, come down front and check your attendance with me, the parliamentarian, and, you know, and then we will give you hall passes essentially to go forth. So let me walk you through the arcaneness of this. The question is, okay, so once you're checked present, and then you stand at ease, you've never wrapped up that legislative day, even though you're going multiple days, you know, calendar days in a row here. I mean, as the world turns, real days. And so what, there's like, so, okay, so once you're present, you're always considered present. And so that's a real constitutional problem because the Constitution does not make that distinction. And a lot of former parliamentarians have been privately criticizing this practice of standing at ease to extend the legislative day because the only motions that are in order are for a roll call or to adjourn, would be their argument. And so it is a real open question. Why are they doing it this way? And in a best case scenario, they're just doing this to allow some of the Republicans to be back in the district so that they're not having to be hostage here for 40, 50, 50, 60 days. Maybe that's it. Maybe it's just to give them, so that they don't have, they're not publicly scrutinized for actually going home when they know that their Democratic colleagues aren't going to be there. Maybe that's a possible explanation. But there, you know, here's, here's kind of the open question. What happens if, if, you know, four Democrats appear for whatever reason? And we'll talk about this here in a second. But if they appear and suddenly check present, check present, check present, oh, we've hit 100 based on a count that was done many days prior. Is anybody going to have a roll call? Will there be a roll call? Will there be a motion for a roll call? Because it would be constitutionally scandalous if four appeared, they deemed that 100 members were present, but 100 members weren't actually present. That's not the constitutional requirement. The problem legally is that the Journal is the official legal record of the House. And so, you know, if you were to pass laws and there weren't actually 100 people present, under the Constitution, it would not be a valid law. But the only way to evidence that would be with the Journal. So you're kind of creating this massive loophole in a constitutional requirement. And there's not really a way to scrutinize that in court without a roll call. So it's kind of an interesting little conundrum that they've entered into that has had several parliamentarians saying, hey, this is, this is, this may not be constitutional and could cause a problem. Let's talk, that's the rules. Let's talk politically for a second, though, Scott. Where we're at in the House is that there are roughly, you could categorize four factions. And two are pretty easy to understand. So what we're about to talk about is kind of based on rumors and gossip, but we think it's worth talking about because it's things that the members are telling us frankly. There are kind of hardliners in both parties. That's no surprise. Probably a majority of both parties at this point would fall into those camps. But you have some number of Democrats that have not checked in, but that privately want to end it. But they do not want the, well, they're worried about primaries. They want cover. And so they are wanting the visual of being arrested because that gives them cover with Democratic primary voters in a primary. It doesn't look like they just caved in. And then you have on the other side, the fourth faction, which is probably the Speaker based on behavior and some number of Republicans in the House, and how many is unclear, that they, they don't really want the visual of legislators in handcuffs. Because the campaign ads write themselves, right? In that regard, and it would put a lot of, you're going to have, they're doing redistricting, but there's still going to be a number of swing districts. It's going to be, you'll see that all through November for sure. And then there's also a question of how do you maintain being Speaker? When you're, this is when you kind of get into the, into some speculation about who voted for who and who would vote for who. But I think there is a real calculation being made about how do you remain Speaker? When the, those kind of, we'll call them feeling Democrats, for lack of a better term, your, your Democrats that would be inclined to vote for you are suddenly not able to vote for you because you had other Democrats arrested. That would be a primary problem for those coalition of Democrats. And then you have on the other side, if you have a hard line in the Republican Party who will never accept you or vote for you, even if you make arrests, how do you maintain your speakership in such an environment in the House? So the House is really in quite a difficult situation. And, and, and the only thing they all agree on is that they're all mad at one another. They're all super mad. And you don't got to take my word for it. Just go look on Twitter. You're seeing really open attacks, member on member. The hostilities are just way out in the open in a way that I don't think we've, we've seen, at least in our recent memory.
Yeah, Twitter has definitely been an interesting place every last few weeks.
There's no Twitter. So yeah, I mean, I can't remember, I can't even think of a historical time short of the Civil War where there were that kind of open hostilities.
I do want to point out something to listeners that you mentioned a couple of times, just to make sure that people are understanding. The quorum requirement is constitutional. It's not a House rule.
That's right.
So.
That's right. And it's a great question. I actually went and looked. The Constitution of 1836 has a two thirds quorum requirement. So how, how did we get and how did certain states get a two thirds quorum requirement? When even in the US Congress, I believe it's only one half and most states have one half. That is a really fascinating question that I would like to have time to research and find the answer to. I had suspected it was slavery, but if it's all the way back to 1836, then I'm not sure. I actually don't know for sure. And I think it would be a very interesting thing to find out.
You had a free day on Saturday. So obviously not a lot going on at the House side, other than, you know, checking in for 15 minutes every afternoon.
And we'll see at four o'clock. I mean, several days I thought I'll go have it today. And we're still here. So I, who knows? I mean, really, it's, I don't, I don't think the members even, I mean, based on what they've told me, the members don't even really know day to day. So.
I'll look forward to that text conversation starting at about 3:55 today. But, so that's on the House side. On the Senate side, there was a lot going on last week. Very busy week on the Senate side. And I think, fast, if you kind of go through the list of all of the bills that pass, many of which our members care a lot about. So walk us through what's happened on the Senate side, and then we'll come back to what they haven't done yet.
Yeah. So what we're going to talk about is what the Senate did. Another way to think about it is this is what awaits House members, if House members get a quorum, or this is what awaits the Democrats that do return, is a way to look at this as well. There were 13 Senate bills that passed and two Senate joint resolutions, which is how we do constitutional amendment. The SJR's are related to legislation. One's property tax and one is bail. We'll go through these here in a second. I do want to mention a rule change in the Senate. It was reported that in truth, that there is no public testimony on House bills if the Senate has already had a hearing on the same subject. That is very broad and open to interpretation, a broad interpretation. There were attempts to say a similar subject like the House rule and that were rejected on the floor. This enables the Senate to move very rapidly. It could already move really rapidly, just suspended rules all the time, but this makes them able to move even faster. The question is, why would you do this? There are a number of theories. One possibility, and I say possibility, is that if you had a number of House members locked in their chamber, then it would enable the Senate to move quite rapidly. So if, say, you negotiated a House bill and water and made it palatable to a majority of House members, and then you send it over to the Senate, and then everybody's locked in their chamber, the Senate could then change that bill real rapidly, revert it back to a version the Senate would prefer, there'd be no hearing. You could just get it through committee, get it to the floor, and then it goes back over to the House while they're all imprisoned, so to speak, or at least locked in the chamber.
You're talking about literally, you're talking about literally locked in the chamber, right? That's not.
Literally, yeah. No, literally locked in the chamber. It has got precedent in other states. It's got precedent in the 1800s in Texas. Yeah. And then you have a conference committee process controlled by the presiding officers. And it could be a real quick conference where it comes back and while you have quorum, an up or down vote on whatever comes out of conference. And this could all happen in a matter of hours. And I go through this to say, this is possible in the rules. And I bring it up to say that there is a complete breakdown in trust among the members, both between the chambers, but within the chambers. And so this is again, worth bringing up because if any Democrats do choose to come back, whether in handcuffs or on their own volition, or some combination of negotiation of the two, all are possible, right? This is what awaits them, is that they could very well be locked down in their chamber and have who knows what shoved down their throats in a very quick process, if they do choose to come back, which is a calculation they should consider. That said, let's talk about what these things could be. And this is, and then we'll talk about what they haven't done too. So, so we'll go with them real quick. Senate Bill one, that's the voter suppression bill. It is through the Senate and awaiting action in the House. Senate Bill two, that's the anti-trans bill. It is through the Senate, awaiting action in the House. Like everything I'm about to say, this is true. It has passed the Senate and is awaiting action in the House, just for time. Senate Bill three, this is the critical race theory boogeyman that is micromanaging how teachers teach rates in the classroom. Senate Bill four has to do with regulating abortion and abortion pills. Senate Bill five is the social media censorship, or in other words, making a private platform a public forum. Senate Bill six is the bail reform or redoing the bail system. And whether it's a reform or not is in the eye of the beholder. Senate Bill seven is the 13th check for retired teachers. Senate Bill eight is a property tax measure. Senate Bill nine is a domestic violence prevention bill that was vetoed. It was vetoed because there wasn't a parental opt out. I'm spending some time on this because the parental opt out is the giant loophole. Most child advocates, when they're teaching about child abuse, family violence, or dating violence, often the perpetrator is the family member. So if you allow parental opt out, it's a great big loophole in helping children get out of that situation. Senate Bill 12, and you'll notice I skipped a couple, we'll come back to those, is another property tax measure. Senate Bill 13 is changing the date of the primary because of the delayed census and redistricting. Senate Bill 14 is an anti-labor bill that preempts local governments from being able to pass labor regulations like mandating water breaks for, for construction workers. Senate Bill 15 is virtual school. And then you have Senate Bills, the SJR's that accompany those two things for bail reform and property tax, which are SGR one and three.
Josh, a couple of weeks ago, when, when B was on, she talked about one bill that needed to be passed before all others if we were going to restore trust in government. I don't, I don't remember hearing that one in your list of things that just passed.
Was this the one about the line of veto?
No.
What did she say? Remind me what she said.
Making sure the legislature is funded.
Oh, yes. That would be Senate Bill 10. I did not mention it. That was the one I skipped over. Which brings me to the next section, which is just as interesting as what the Senate passed, is what the Senate hasn't done. And so, yes, SB 10, which is restoring the funding for Article 10 for the legislature, is sitting in the Senate Finance Committee, presumably under a hostage situation. What this tells a professional observer is that the funding for Article 10 is being held hostage until the House passes those other items I just mentioned. We've seen this before with, in 2017 with the sunset bill, for instance, when they forced us into special session on bathrooms. This is a similar play to that situation, if you remember that. Also not things the Senate has not done. So if you look at the items on the call, that the governor said, I want you to do the call of the special session, there are a number of items missing. We talked about Article 10, but also there's no money for COVID. That was one of the things that was in the call. There's no money for border or the governor spends, which the governor put in the call. There is no money for foster care. Of course, that is in crisis and allegedly one of the things that Republicans keep bludgeoning Democrats with, even though Republicans have had control of state government, this is true, for 20 years, and the foster care crisis is of their own making. There's no money for cybersecurity, which if you were actually concerned about election security, would have been your top, one of your top things, making sure that the voter rolls are protected. There's no, oh, and there's no legislation for radioactive waste, which is more of a donor, big Republican donor issue than a thing anybody really wants, except for the people in Andrews County. And then last, but certainly not least, is on the call, is legislation for mask mandates and vaccine, making sure vaccines are voluntary. And I saved this for last for a reason. The governor wants the legislature to enact statutes prohibiting local mask mandates and prohibiting vaccine mandates. prohibiting local mask mandates and prohibiting vaccine mandates. For a number of reasons. So one, this actually came up on House Bill Three, which was a failed bill in the regular session. And very narrowly, the House, I think it was 72, 71 on the vote verification, voted down an amendment that would have prohibited locals from doing mask mandates. And if you know the composition of the House, you can't have a 72, 71 vote without some number of Republicans siding with Democrats on the mask issue. Now, the governor wants this, I think this is where I want to kind of circle back to this macro framing. The governor wants this because he's currently using Chapter 418 of the Government Code. Which is, so he's using emergency disaster declaration powers to micromanage local government. It is legally dubious. And so you have seen in the news that local governments have challenged the governor's authority on this. They're not defying the governor. They're, they're challenging the authority, and they're challenging it in court. Because they also have sworn an oath to the constitutions of the state in the United States. And they're reading it differently. And there is a good faith argument here, and I want to make sure we understand what's really going on with this. The governor, and I'm not saying the governor's wrong either, but the governor is reading Chapter 418 very expansively. It is an open question about whether or not Chapter 418 was ever intended to create perpetual disaster powers. And if you think about this, there's really no limitation on when the governor can declare disaster. So the question is, what, I mean, if you reverse it, let's pretend it was a Democratic governor. The legislature wasn't doing what that Democratic governor wanted. So the Democratic governor just declares disaster. And uses emergency powers to do what the Democratic governor wants. This is, this is, this is the big macro legal separation of powers issue. I've, we've read GA 38, which is the executive order in question. It just suspends entire chapters of code. So the governor's just said, these entire chapters of code have been suspended under my powers, disaster powers. And they're all related to how local government responds to public health emergencies. They've just been whole cloth suspended. And if you read Chapter 418, the governor may suspend. But the governor cannot write statutes. This seems like a pretty clear category, but you can get really creative with your suspensions in order to basically enact things, enact laws, which is of course, the power of the legislative branch, not the executive branch. So we're getting into some pretty gray space here, having to do with separation of powers between the legislative and executive branches. Also, the power is limited to, and this is what's in the code, regulatory statutes. So the open legal questions are, is the governor writing laws? Because there is no statute on masks that can be suspended. He's suspending general powers of local government in order to say you can't do masks. And if it's suspension and not writing laws, the second legal threshold is, what is a regulatory statute? And as far as we can tell, there's no definition of, of what is a regulatory statute versus a regular statute. Like, if the governor can't suspend any statute, the law would have said that. The law wouldn't have said regulatory statute. But the question is, what is a regulatory statute? And that is wholly unclear in the government code. And so it's kind of way too simplistic to say this is about masks. This is about much more than masks. It really is about the, the expansive of executive power. And the expanse, under the disaster declaration statute, what is the, the, the limits of executive power? And that's the big conversation that they're having. Which kind of brings me finally to the third branch of government we so rarely talk about. Which is the judiciary. We live in a state that has historically been skeptical of executive power, at least since 1876, if not longer. And I come back to this question we started with, is this still true? There's been no pushback to date from the other two co-equal branches of government, that being the legislative or the judiciary. There's no pushback on perpetual disaster that we seem to be living under, under Chapter 418. There seem to be no limits on what kind of statutes can or cannot be suspended, at least so far. There's been no pushback from the legislative branch to curb this definitionally. And there's been no pushback from the judiciary so far. Now, I want to be kind of clear that what the judiciary has so far said. The judiciary has, I mean, the media really struggles to report on legal matters. What, where we're currently at is there's been no ruling on the merits on what I've just described. What I've just described is called the merits of the case. We've not reached or even argued the merits of the case. What has been currently volatile about in court is whether or not there's a restraining order on the governor. And district judges said yes, and the Supreme Court said no. We won't restrain the governor until we reach the merits of the case. This is important. The ruling is only on the restraining order, not on the merits. So the merits are still pending. That said, the line item veto case is quite probative. If the governor can veto, that case has been handed down and lawyers are loathe to, to criticize the judiciary and judges. Nevertheless, it is a it's a bit of a laughable opinion. And so that's, that's strong language for a lawyer to say that about a judge. They never decided the merits of whether or not the governor could veto the budget for an entire branch of government. They never hit the actual issue that was being litigated. What they essentially said is, this is the Democrats' fault for breaking quorum. Wait, the Democrats had nothing to do with the veto in the first place. And the legal merits of the case are on the line item veto. Not on what happened subsequent to the veto. That's why I say legally is laughable, because the legal question is the veto itself, not what happened after the veto. But that was the way that they found a way to punt. And, and, and not, you know, limit the governor that appointed most of them. And, and, and also they'll be running for reelection as well. So we've seen no pushback on expansive executive authority from the other two co-equal branches of government. And that is the kind of the operative question we started with, which is what do the people of Texas think about that? Because it is out of step with what we've historically thought about that. But it is a very different state now than it was even 40 years ago.
So we will continue to be, have our daily process of watching to see if and when the House comes back, so we can start to see what happens with the legislature moving forward. But what, what advice or do you have any guidance for people who are listening or watching about what they should be doing right now?
It's challenging to say, right? I mean, it is really hard. We're an organization that deeply believes in calling your local elected official. It is not clear that they are listening or paying attention. I think the thing to do, though, is to not tune out. Because that's what Texans often do, is they don't pay attention to their state government. I think the thing to do is the opposite, is to make sure people understand what is going on in state government. Because state governments really do have a, a high degree of power over your day to day life. And you've got this complete conflict between your state and your local, and you elect them both, which is kind of a crazy thing, right? Whenever the state starts limiting local authority, they're also limiting your local authority as a voter to decide what is best for your community. I think the thing to do is, is to, to really double down on your community. Wherever it may be. And you elect that school board that is having to make these, these literally life and death choices, while, I mean, for what happens to our children. What do you expect of your state government if, if they have exacerbated a problem in the hospitals and you have a heart attack? And there's not a bed for you. If you have a car accident and there's not a bed for you at the hospital. What do we expect from our public health systems? Because they have been stressed, strained, and are receiving no assistance from those that we elect. Is that what we want? That is a fundamental question we're going to have to ask as voters.
It's, it's interesting, now that you say that, right? Because I, I don't know that I've ever seen such an intersection between different levels of government, right? So you have this, you know, you described some newspaper headline is calling it a civil war in Texas between local governments and the state. But at the same time, you have members of the Texas House of Representatives in DC, like advocating for federal policy change. And so maybe the step right now is just, we, in this podcast with Texas Impact, we, we encourage you to build relationships with your state representative and your state senators and their offices. But now, now might be the time to actually have those conversations with the local elected officials and communicate the needs of your community after those conversations with your state electeds. Excuse me, and likewise on up to your, your members of Congress. And so I think the, the importance of building those relationships with elected officials from the ground up is important. And that can maybe be our homework for this week.
Yeah, it is impossible for Texas Impact to be in 1,100 municipalities, 254 counties, over 1,000 school boards or more. That's, that's not possible for a statewide organization. That's where we depend on people being active in their community. And it's hard with the pandemic to be connected, but nevertheless, your community needs you. Because the, many of the institutions and fabrics of our communities have been frayed. Anyway, start there, because if you're not active there. It really, there's, I mean, you've heard the axiom, all politics is local. It is true. It is still true. But it is very easy to be distracted when there are not news services covering local government. When there are, I mean, they don't have the capacity. There's very few news services even covering state legislatures well. And the national news can so dominate what you hear. It is easy to be distracted by that. And I think the discipline is to not be distracted by that and to really commit to local community. And we're people of faith, right? We're good at this. We go to a local community every Sunday. That institution is, is important to us, and that's why we attend it on a weekly basis. And making sure that it's not just feeding us individually our individual spirits. But that we are also using our individual spirits to make sure that the, it is serving our communities and bolstering our communities. And trying to patch the holes in the fabric of our communities is, I think, an essential task for us at this hour.
Well, I always like it when Seminary Josh closes us out with, with some important talk about fabric of community. Josh, thank you for the time today. Thanks for the work that you're doing, and I'll look forward to maybe spending 15 minutes with you texting every afternoon this week, watching the Texas House. And friends, thank you all for tuning in today. I'll remind you once again that as we have these conversations about voting rights, as we have these conversations about these important public policy topics, we're just at the beginning of what could be a very long, maybe decade-long series of conversations about this. So let's start digging in. Let's start bringing more people in, into this process, so we can do this work for justice and equality. Make sure that you are keeping an eye on texasimpact.org for updates. You can go there to sign up for our rapid response team to get email and text message updates when bills start to move and your telephone calls are necessary. Sign up for Legislative Engagement Group. And to go to texasimpact.org/elections to sign up to help with that, that, that process of making sure that elections take place next year and the years moving forward. If you have questions, you can always email me at scott@texasimpact.org for more information. And remember, if you appreciate Texas Impact and the Weekly Witness community, please make sure that you and your congregation are members by going to texasimpact.org/join. Friends, we look forward to partnering with you to mobilize for safe and fair elections and to work for a more just and equitable Texas. It's going to take more to make that happen than just listening to a podcast. But it will require that every one of us communicate with our elected representatives at all levels of government and reach out to our friends and congregations to join us in this movement for justice. So let's get to work. Thanks, friends.